Let's call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, Mr. Grandia.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Very good. Would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Communications, Jake, any received by your office?
Nothing from me.
Very good. Supervisors?
I don't have anything.
Steve?
Nor do I.
All right, and I do not. Public comments, this is the portion of the agenda that public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Nothing in the room? Emily, anything online? Very good. We will move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, very good. Onto business. Our first item is the Junction 92 project. We have Michael Maloney. Is Michael on this morning? To talk about?
Come on.
Thanks for joining us this morning. Tyler, if you want to give us a, just a brief overview of what Michael's going to present, and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, so there's some slides there, but I think Michael summarized this best in the email he sent to me a few weeks ago. Basically saying in short, the path to finance would be geo, could be geo bonds, without the need for a referendum or potential petition by reverse referendum. It could then be paid back by any county revenue source such as the lost road use tax or through property tax. However, the intent, as we've discussed to date, has always been to pay back any potential debt with local option sales tax revenue.
Right.
And so no new property tax levy, no additional tax on property taxes by utilizing the existing tax, which is local option sales.
Right. So the, the goal is property tax neutrality on this project? Have no impact, use sales tax rather than cover that. Okay, good.
And so the, there's some slides here, but I agree with the suggestion from Michael that to be able to proceed, we move forward with the timeline that has been laid out and that I attached with the agenda. Jake, did you include the timeline in here also?
Yes.
So that timeline would, would have the public hearing in December, which would set us up to secure the bond by March essentially, funds available by March. And that would be my recommendation. There could be a pause or for whatever reason, my recommendation would be to proceed with this prior to going out for bid and securing the funding prior to going out for bid. So if you want to go through the slides, I got a couple of comments in there. And if Michael, you want to jump in at any point?
Sure.
So I guess this is really just a summary of the project. You have all heard this on a number of occasions. We do have other needs in the county as well, but facilities are something that we've been trying to address for decades. Go to the next one. Uh, Michael, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, I'm, I'm presuming everybody's read through these slides already, so I'm going to kind of go from off the page here a little bit. But the point of the prior slide was to just talk about not just the, the, the building, but also the other capital improvement needs, right? There's a clearly identified set of projects out there of more dollars than expected to be borrowing for. So as we think about this, you know, kind of putting some of the puzzle pieces together, whenever we're talking with cities, counties, or other entities about capital planning, it's the big three. So authority, capacity, and repayment. At the county level, capacity is typically not really an issue, so we think about authority and repayment. And, you know, we've got funding sources identified, kind of the, the net neutral per Mark's comment in terms of property tax impact. So what our focus has been working preliminarily with the, the county's bond council was authority, which is how do we gain legal authority to proceed? And through a simple public hearing process, any county in Iowa is able to address road, bridge, and culvert projects for economic development purposes without a, a referendum. So with the, the nearly $16 million of identified projects currently in the capital plan, uh, that's pretty straightforward. Rather than necessarily borrowing directly for the building project, we're going to borrow for those projects, but it's just about gaining authority most easily. The net impact back to the county remains the same. So just wanted to give that big picture here and answer any questions. I think this is the key to the process overall. You know, I, I think everything's been laid out pretty well to date on this. I think this is consistent with the discussions that date back, at least, you know, this spring, very clearly on this project, uh, planning.
Well, do you have any questions for Michael on the authority piece? This is probably a pretty critical one for, for the board to understand, also for the public to understand as well.
And I would, I would just say, you know, I, I think for the county, this is, hey, that's a, this is a good way to go about that. You know, we're getting into budget time around the state for all kinds of tax and jurisdictions, and this is really the, the, the key mechanics, the bread and butter of, of how capital planning goes. So this is just something I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of is, hey, this is really how we spend a lot of our time each winter, working for other communities and their projects as well.
Very good.
Yep. So Michael, um, I want to make sure that I fully understand. We can do the geo bonds because of the county has a 16 million projected of road, bridge, and culvert improvements.
Yep.
Twenty-three through twenty-seven.
Yep. And we're only borrowing for, what we're saying is, rather than paying as you go for all of that, we're going to borrow for around three and a half million of that total.
Steve?
That was one of the questions I had also, that, you know, what, what that we're borrowing was against, but he was pretty clear on that.
And remember, we went for a sizable cash option, uh, process on this as well.
For the project, yes.
Correct.
Yeah, about sixty percent.
Yep. So, okay, very good. Michael, go ahead and continue, please.
Yeah, uh, you know, the next slide you've seen from me before, I just feel like it's important for us to make sure you guys see that debt capacity consideration each time. I know I said capacity is not really a concern, but I wanted to be clear. For fiscal year, the, the county's valuation is over three billion. That makes the debt limit about 151 million. Uh, right now, you have about 16 million outstanding on that, which leaves 135 million in capacity. I, I don't think we need to dwell on this. I just like to show this work every time we talk about potential geo bonding.
Oh, I appreciate that. Very good. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're well within our limits. I mean, actually, it's a pretty good number, actually.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, we're, we're in very good shape.
Situation coming on too at some point, but.
Yeah, that'll be two, two to 2.3, so.
Okay.
So this slide's really stating what we've just talked about. Your point marked, five million dollars has been allocated for cash for the project. Uh, we're borrowing for 3.5 million and then, uh, to those program, program projects that Michael talked about. I do want to point out one thing in, uh, the third bullet point, uh, said debt could be repaid from debt service, levy, tax revenue, lost revenues. But again, our intent here, as we've always discussed, has been local option sales tax revenue for the repayment.
Michael, the only, the question I have on that, I appreciate that clarity, Tyler, is, uh, lost revenue projected forward assumes a certain sales rate. Uh, what, what happens if we don't hit those targets? What happens if sales drop off and, and lost revenue drops off dramatically?
Yeah, yeah.
So Mark, I think that's one of the, the benefits here of this security structure of the geo backing behind this. Um, you know, to Tyler's point, we're planning to use lost revenues. I, I think it's good to think about those downside risks, as you're mentioning. Um, and while it's the same question we're asking a lot of places around the state, you know, we're having kind of the opposite discussions here in other places as well. Where lost and road use tax have been more favorable over the last few years than I think some people feared they would be. And we're seeing either, uh, some, some heavy cash balances or, or other uses of those funds that, hey, what's, what's reasonable going forward? So rather than giving you a, a, a perfect answer or a perfect projection, because I don't think one, one exists, I think the point would be if, if lost is much less than expected, you know, we'd have the backstop of using some road use tax dollars. That might be a pinch point down the road, although that's not something we're planning on. But then we also would be able to use the potential property tax backstop in a, in a real downside scenario. So repayment's not going to be an issue. And that's why investors look at the geo bonds so favorably. The thing I'd also mention as we talk about the future and future planning, you know, each budget cycle, you can mix and match, match these, these sources. So it doesn't have to be repaid all by one each year. This can be dynamic as we go over time. So that's kind of the, the, the key backstop here for not just planning purposes, but downside risk purposes for the county as well. That's my best non-answer answer for you, Mark. How's that?
And, and I'll also point out, as, as I have in previous presentations to you about the project, with this option of the funding, the 3.5 million with local option sales tax revenue, we're looking at about thirty percent or less of the local option sales tax revenue. It would just reduce the amount of discretionary project dollars available.
Yeah.
For other projects. So we have that sixty percent revenue cushion, so to speak, right now. Uh, so I want the public to be aware of that.
Yeah, no, keep going, Tyler.
There can be some revenue reduction from sales tax, and we would still comfortably be able to pay for this, in my opinion.
Okay, see, and that's, and so I appreciate that, both, both of you.
Thirty percent, don't quote me on that. It's somewhere around.
It's in that twenty-eight, thirty-two.
Something like that, yeah.
So that's what I wanted to make sure everybody understood. We're not maxing out what we currently project in our lost revenue. We're leaving ourselves a cushion, which is good. But Michael, to your point, we do have other options in the event of a worst case scenario.
Correct.
And, yeah, so that's very good, Tyler.
And with, um, the law enforcement center going off, um, the payment there, the 300,000, that will be helpful. And I also studied that, the lost revenue for the last, well, it hasn't been since the law enforcement center been on. But, I mean, like, even when we went through the downturn in 2008, it wasn't as bad as what I expected. So, you know, with, with you saying your numbers, I do feel, I felt very comfortable doing the lost route.
Yeah, and just to reiterate for you and for the public, we, the county is currently making a debt payment from local option sales tax for the law enforcement center. This debt repayment would essentially take over and be nearly a net zero change for the lost fund.
Yes.
Very good. Very good.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just, just project steps and timing. I think Tyler did an excellent job getting all this teed up. Um, he'll continue to do the, the lion's share here in terms of gaining authority. So, uh, the next step would be getting the bond attorney, uh, Steve at Allers, to get proceedings out for you for your next couple of board meetings to set and hold the hearing. He'll need to do a little work with Tyler to review the projects and, and talk about the economic development purpose of that. Um, I, I don't think that's much of a hurdle, considering Tyler typically will frame even in the budget conversations how those are, are in fact the case. So with everything organized here, we're not starting flat-footed. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think that'll be very straightforward. The remaining steps, to Tyler's point, you know, we can, we can proceed and get funding, uh, provided to the county as soon as March. But I think the key is to just knock out the public hearing process sooner than later to gain authority over the next, uh, couple meetings. So potentially using the December meetings, assuming the calendar shapes up correctly. But we can get, uh, the folks at Allers rolling as soon as this afternoon, uh, on that process. Uh, we would be updating the offering document that we used in 2020 and 2021 on the county's behalf for approval in January, and then potentially be able to lock rates late January, early February on a potential financing. So, you know, this is all teed up here to proceed. But again, I think the, the dates that we'd really want to, you know, be focused on is getting that hearing out of the, out of the way to gain authority for the project, and then making sure we're lining up to, to, to Tyler's direction on, on when proceeds are available with bidding. Um, Tyler, am I, am I saying that all consistently with your understanding?
Yes.
Very good. Keisha, how much did we drop off in 2008, since you looked at?
I, that's what I said. When I looked at it, I just saw that we didn't have a significant, I mean, I don't, I didn't write it down, but we did not have a significant loss. So that was important to me when I, when I reviewed it overall, so.
Interesting. Okay, Tyler, so next steps, you need some kind of approval from us to move forward and start getting this on the calendar? Jake, is that what we're looking at right now?
I think today it was set up as discussion.
Yeah, it was just a planned presentation.
Planned presentation.
You know, largely this timeline you're seeing now is where we have actionable steps.
Sure, but as far as the moving forward, you don't need any additional approvals from us to get it, things on the calendar and start putting the timeline together with all, allers, anything like that?
I believe Tyler, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, um, essentially would, with the assistance of Michael and, um, Allers, and bring forth a, present a resolution to you guys as an agenda item next week, um, setting, which would then be setting the date for the hearing. So, right, so Tyler would present to you the resolution or the agenda item, just like normal.
Yep.
To, to kick off that calendar right in front of you.
Perfect.
That's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, that's correct.
Excellent. Very good.
Can we just confirm with holidays and all that good stuff and publishing, the 13th and the 27th will be the meeting dates for the county board in December?
That is correct.
And Jake, we're good with publishing and the paper. We've got all that, kind of, uh, you guys are well-oiled machine at this point, right?
So my staff and I have looked at that. We would actually have to have that to the paper on the 12th.
Yep, that's our usual process. Yep, okay.
finishing the four-day, four to 20, really plus Christmas and Christmas Eve would be in that four days, so the 12th and the board takes action on the 13th, then it would be published on the following Friday.
Yep. That sounds, that sounds consistent, but we've done the last couple of times, Tyler. And, and my email to Steve at Allers, I'll make sure that's there, so he and his staff are aware and we'll knock it out accordingly.
All right.
All right, very good. So I will proceed with that and then wait for the next meeting, uh, to, uh, get some formal documents in place. Or do you have any other discussion or questions for Michael or Tyler?
Thank you, Michael.
Very good.
Thank you, Tyler.
No, this has been a long time coming.
All right. Michael, thanks again for all your work. Always appreciate it. Tyler, thank you, uh, very much. Is there a motion to close discussion?
Make motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner?
Thanks.
Combs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Michael.
Next, we have Resolution 2022-80. This is authorizing a funding agreement, uh, with Department of Transportation with the, is it C-step?
C-step.
C-step. Want to make sure I get my acronym right.
Uh, it's County State Traffic Engineering Program or something like that.
Let's go with C-step.
Yeah, we'll go with C-step.
Okay, catchy.
So you're all aware of the RISE project for the LDJ manufacturing. So through the design development of, phase of this project, uh, the DOT has made a number of recommendations beyond the original scope of the project. So we received, and applied for and received the RISE grant based on, um, turn lane design similar to secondary road turn lanes on Highway Five, uh, four lane, Highway 163, four lane. However, um, I guess, let me gently put this, it, the DOT wasn't necessarily recommending this project happen from the get-go, but if we are going to do it, they want to do it their way with their recommendations. With that being said, the recommendations that they are essentially requiring of the project will be paid for from C-step. So I had to apply via a letter to receive the C-step funds. So there is no new allocation required from the county. The RISE grant and everything remains as is. This is an additional funding source paying for the additional recommendations being, uh, recommended by the DOT.
Okay, so doesn't put us on the hook for any additional funding?
It does not.
Okay.
Good now.
What are the recommendations?
Project timeline remains the same as well, so we're still on the same bid letting schedule, uh, and I confirm that with Gardner Associates. Steve?
What are their recommendations, Tyler? What's different about what?
Uh, essentially the length of the turn lanes of, of both turn lanes. Um, so let's just.
The truck, the truck traffic.
Yeah.
Being able to merge over and.
Yeah.
So these turn lanes will be fairly large, uh, by comparison to what you would typically see on, um, four lane in Marion County. The only one I could find on the 163 corridor similar in length would be the Metro Waste Authority landfill in Pleasant Hill.
Pleasant Hill, okay.
Okay. That doesn't pose any issues, though, does it, Tyler?
Not, no.
From a safety engineering?
No, it's, uh, you know, they're airing.
Supposed to improve, supposed to, supposed to improve it, right? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when we started discussion on this even further, and when the DOT requested, um, the longer turn lanes, uh, you know, Tyler and I discussed, and, and DOT did give the suggestion of the C-step, but of course, you know, Tyler had to apply for that, and I want to thank Tyler. Um, he's put in a lot of work on this, so, um, overall.
And just so you're all aware, we have done C-step matched with RISE before. The turn lanes on Highway 14 for the Wyler Drive project, although that project was administered by the city of Knoxville and their consultant, the county did have to apply for RISE and C-step for our share of Wyler Drive.
Sure, but it just, it doesn't obligate us for any additional funding.
It does not.
Good. That's all, that's, that's what I care about. Steve, any other questions?
No, that's good. Thank you, Tyler.
Keisha?
Oh.
All right, very good. Tyler, thank you. If there is no further questions, entertain a motion on this resolution.
Make motion to approve Resolution 2022-80.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Resolution 2022-84. This is a Flagler Bridge supplemental agreement with Calhoun and Burns. Tyler?
So you've seen design contracts on, this will be the third occasion. The first was for the feasibility study, the second was for preliminary design. This is normal for, uh, bridge design of this scale. We typically do supplemental contracts. Um, that way, as the project changes or progresses and the design alters slightly, we get the contract in place for what design services are actually needed. Um, the only thing I will point out here is we are slightly, this is slightly above our budgeted number. Um, but I had a, a nice conversation with, uh, Mike Vanderwerk about, let's see, items four and five there are hourly rates. Uh, four being the railroad coordination. We are well into that process, um, in, in preliminary design. And, and we all anticipate that number being significantly less in final design, because we have crossed a lot of the major hurdles already, as far as railroad coordination. Um, and then the item five there, sometimes we take on a lot of that, uh, with our own staff. So we, those costs may not be incurred, which gets us basically back to our budgeted amount for this project. So I recommend approval of this supplemental agreement.
Okay, very good. Questions?
If, I just have a question for you, Tyler, in regarding, you know, this, we've been talking about this quite a bit. Will this, if this is approved, further, I mean, does the Flagler, Flagler Bridge start in the spring, or when does that start?
So with this final, with this contract, this authorizes them to proceed to final design, which we are still on a May 18 letting date. For the project. Now, in my same, same conversation with Mike earlier this week, or last week, we talked about construction, lead times on pre-cash, pre-stress beams is fairly lengthy, although it's dialed back a little bit over last year. There's a chance construction doesn't happen in calendar year 23. Um, it, it may be delayed until spring of 24. Um, could they start the project? Sure. But the final phases of the project are pouring a bridge deck, pouring bridge approaches, and asphalt paving associated with the road realignment. So things that can't be done in the winter.
Right. All right, good. Any other questions? Steve, Keisha?
Nope. Thank you again, Tyler, for your work on this.
So with that, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-84.
A second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Good. Resolution 2022-85, which is stop and yield regulatory signage.
So Jake had mentioned this earlier. Uh, there was a, there was previously an ordinance related to regulatory sign, stop and yields. Uh, basically maintaining a list and the ordinance had to be amended. In the early 2000s, that ordinance was essentially repealed by resolution. And now anytime, County Engineers Office maintains that list, anytime we erect a regulatory sign, we come to you for authorization with, for enforcement. So essentially allowing us to put the sign up and then that sign to be enforceable. Because stop, speed limits, yields are enforceable, signs, because they're regulatory. So these three locations have been on our radar for quite some time. We, uh, finally went and did our, uh, engineering study, reviewed each intersection. With each of these three, we have a Level B or Level C, so a dirt road that is the side street essentially. And previously, the through street had been the stop condition or the yield condition. We are recommending changing that, so the stop condition is on the side road, on the, the dirt road that's accessing the main road. And some of these were, the, the, you know, in history, long, long ago, they were, uh, the main road. And it's just been kind of neglected over time. And, um, so basically, these are kind of a housekeeping item, clean things up and do really what should be done at these intersections for traffic safety and and continuity throughout the road system.
Okay. Good questions.
Makes perfect sense, Tyler.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution 2022-85.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good. 2022-86, cattle pass agreement authorization.
So this one's a little unique. This one's also mine.
I don't think in 10 years I've had a resolution on a cattle pass.
I don't.
This is a first.
I don't know that Marion County's ever had one.
Yeah.
I couldn't find any. We, now we have cattle passes, Steve, and see your face. We have cattle passes. I don't know we've ever had this exact situation. And to further complicate things, it's a road in Mahaska County that Marion County maintains, so.
Well, wait a minute. What?
So as part of our 2080 agreement, we have a road that we maintain, a portion of the county line that we maintain that then turns and goes into Mahaska County for a quarter mile. So we maintain that quarter mile as part of our 2080 agreement. They have roads that they maintain in Marion County similarly.
Okay.
Makes more sense for the motor graders not to deadhead for miles to get to a quarter mile. And so
Sure, sure.
longstanding maintenance agreement from the early 2000s, um, so Marion County is responsible for the routine and special maintenance of the road. Mahaska County still retains jurisdiction over the right-of-way. So we have similar agreements with the cities as well.
Sure.
City of Bossy, City of Pala. So the cattle pass agreement, I was approached by the Mahaska County engineer and the landowner, um, Brendan Turpstra, and we had a discussion about a culvert that had a few issues, and if we could upsize it as part of our repair to allow cattle to pass through. We have cattle crossings elsewhere in the county. Some serve dual purpose, uh, such as water, flowage, and cattle. So it wasn't unheard of. Um, we had never built one, or I had definitely never built one as part of a project. Uh, we have replaced, we have replaced a bridge that served as a cattle pass with a larger diameter culvert. Uh, down by Harvey actually. But then as I looked at the culvert, the culvert's in really good shape. There was a few issues around the outlet of the culvert. And so I, my recommendation was to not upsize that culvert. You know, and and make it dual purpose, but maybe consider an alternative location for the cattle pass. Uh, you know, then then there's really no question in the future about who's responsible for what and the upsizing, uh, if that culvert has issues in the future. Excuse me, that sort of thing. So the, and the property owner said, you know, actually it would better suit me up here because I have I own the property on the north, I lease the parcel on the south, and that's really where I need the cattle to be and to cross. So I did some research, reached out to all ninety-nine counties. And in fact, there were examples of this and there actually is an Iowa code section that gives you the authorization to allow a private entity to install. Some counties do this at their expense, others allow it, but allow the con- or the requesting property owner to install it and maintain the crossing. So the agreement that we uh, provided here, so the Mahaska County engineer and I worked together on this. Uh, it is a little bit complicated again because there's two counties involved, but also two property owners. The current property owner leases from the property owner on the south, both of which are in agreement for this. The maintenance, the installation, maintenance of the cattle pass would be by the requesting property owner. And that's stated here in this agreement. And also we would ensure that the materials and construction was in compliance with uh, with our standards. So this agreement was, I believe, from Woodbury County. So we use their example.
Model that's already existed. So that's good.
So Tyler, I have a few questions. Who then even you guys help tear up the road and do that? Are they hire that all done? My, you know, because.
So just like we would with any project in the right of way, we would require insurance certificates. We would uh, review and inspect the construction. Um, so we would permit the construction and give him specifications for the installation. The material.
This is very interesting because I just think of the expense that's going to go into it to be able to, to do it.
Yep.
One further down the road um, in Mahaska County on the way to New Sharon? Is there one that goes underneath there too?
I, and I don't know in Mahaska.
Okay.
We do have a note, uh, highway S forty-five has two, I believe, maybe three.
Okay.
Uh, we have a few underground roads as well in Marion County.
That's relatively busy gravel road pass there. I mean, going, is that gonna?
This portion?
Yeah, is it? I mean.
This portion has one house once you turn into Mahaska. So the section is essentially a dead end with one.
Oh, okay.
All right. And it's the requesters home.
Did you say they're gonna, are you gonna use the existing culvert or they're gonna actually replace?
So this would be upstream uphill about a hundred and twenty feet from the existing crossroad culvert. There would be a new
Okay.
cattle pass, only culvert.
All right.
Okay. I, I don't, unless you see something here Tyler that puts us in the business of putting these in on a regular basis. That would be my only concern.
No, and I, I think, you know, the circumstances won't always allow for this.
Right.
You know, there, it takes a certain right of way ditch to accommodate this and and luckily they have that.
They have all that, just confluence of positive events. So, all right.
And to, to your point Keisha, it is pretty costly. Um, you know, they had their own justification of why and what it was going to cost them for cattle in that other field.
Yep.
I don't understand it all, but they understand that.
They're paying for it, yeah. All right, is there a motion on this resolution?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty-six.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
This will go to the Mahaska County Board of Supervisors on their first meeting in December.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Tyler's, oh, you're still up?
Nope.
No, you're not.
Just gonna listen to this one.
All right. We have a receiving file for the twenty twenty-two week commissioner IRVM report.
So weed commissioner is Phil Grindeldeike. I don't see him here today. Um, he is submitting this to you guys. It's an annual process. Um, this one was informational only, uh, his activity report and for receiving file type thing. I don't think he's on, I don't know if he's online. We emailed him the stuff and they responded. Thank you.
It's, it's in your packets board. Do you have any questions before we receive a file? There's really no.
Yep, this one is a receiving file and the next one is like um, a different type of report. Uh, and I, I think he works real closely with the IRVM program. And with secondary or with road department on the next item. So this is a informational receiving, receiving file.
Yep. Questions?
No, I just think it's interesting. The, the comment was made, what are suggestions and recommendations which may improve your county weed and brush infestations? And it says absentee property owners are a big problem. So those property owners that are gone and not taken care of, yeah.
All right. Very good, Steve, anything?
No, I'm fairly familiar with this process since I held this position.
I was gonna say. All right.
And then hilt, so sorry, just says additional, then the whole thing just starts over again. So Phil will prepare um, or call me and ask us to publish um, early spring or something, the, the program or plan in the paper. So all can know and um, and it starts the whole, the whole process over again, not that far, far away.
Yeah, this is a, this is a state required report.
There are motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good, thank you.
So, uh, the next one is again, I, I really don't know much about the, the details of what's in the report, but this is the actual commissioner report that is submitted to the state.
Yeah, it's the same.
So. I think there's a, um, on the last page.
You list all the gallons, everything that's been used, all the treatments that have been made.
If you guys approve of this, and I believe this is where he gets a lot, a lot of help from IRVM, then this is what um, I'll send to the state.
Right. But yeah, the only action we need is to approve it, right? Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the weed commissioner report?
I make a motion to reapprove the twenty twenty-two weed commissioners report.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi. Very good. Next, we have a twenty-eighty agreement with Iowa DOT for driver's license services. Michaela, Marion County Treasurer.
Okay, so the DOT has uh, they've changed leadership. They've gone through a lot of their um kind of administrative tasks. Um, and one of them was just updating the twenty-eighty between the counties and the Department of Transportation. Um, really, there's no significant change in this. Um, the biggest change is that they made a, an adjustment to terminology from um taking out the word furnishings and substituting the word equipment to more clearly define what they will provide to the county so that we can do our jobs. So uh, locking that down to PCs, monitors, internet connection, et cetera. So.
Michaela, there's, I think there's been no change to the fee structure either, correct?
Not to driver's license, no.
Okay.
Um.
And with the legal changes to that, that still puts a potential additional burden on us. Where people from other counties come here and
Certainly.
do their thing. Okay.
Certainly. Right now in Marion County, we have, I think about ten percent uh, folks mostly from Polk County um, that will come to Marion County and uh, perform their driver's license services here. That's not a terrible number. Um, some counties, I think Jones County has sixty percent overflow.
Oh, wow.
So, which is what prompted um, a legislative proposal a couple of years ago. It has not passed at this time where if you are someone from another county renewing in uh, for example, Marion County, there would be a convenience fee of ten or twenty dollars that we, the treasurer may tack on. So.
Okay.
That is something that I think will be revisited again this year. So.
Okay. Very good. Questions from Michaela? Pretty pro forma. Very good. Is there a motion to uh, approve this twenty-eighty?
Yeah, make motion to approve the twenty-eighty.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Very good.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty-three, which is wow. Talking about holidays for next year already Jake, what's going on?
Yeah.
What happened?
Well, it's almost New Year. Amazing.
What happened?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, is the same list Lisa that we've had before?
Yes, we are trying to bring this before the board uh, November, December, before the new year. In the past, you know, we have done this usually typically the first meeting of the new year and the holidays already passed. So this is the same list that we use that, that was um, approved last year. So it does include Martin Luther's King Day um, and President's Day. But otherwise, it's the standard list that we've always had.
And the state doesn't give President's Day, correct?
That is correct. And, and the state typically this year, they've, they've authorized three um, extra days for the state. So like they have when, this Wednesday off. They have the Friday before um, Christmas off and the Friday of New Year's off also. So they've all.
They've, they've authorized more days.
Right. They, they, they'll give us a standard list and then they do what they want to do when they want to do it. So.
Yeah, they've added that. They've added those for twenty twenty-three now. So it's like.
Oh, have they really?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think they're like at fourteen days now or so.
Oh, are they really? Okay.
Nine plus three would be twelve.
I feel like um, and Ed, I was talking with Ed yesterday as well, and I feel like I've seen something where they officially added those extra days now for twenty twenty-three as well. So court services won't be as, will be closed more.
And just to be clear, we only announce um, days that the county offices are closed. So you'll see that consistent on with Emily, um, when she puts it on the Facebook page. She coordinates that with Andrew with IT. And that's only county businesses. So we, we let the state do their own
Their own thing.
Their own thing. Yes. Just so you're aware.
Yep. Questions, board?
I mean, we have eleven. I do think that that's very reasonable.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve this resolution or make a motion on this resolution? Sorry, I don't want to presume.
I make a motion, we approve of resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty-three.
A second.
Raimi.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Public hearing. Missy, we'll declare the public hearing open for prospective Marion County ordinance.
This is for the rezoning for Steenhucks.
So. So you, how much detail do we want to go into?
That's on the next.
That's on the next one?
Yep, so this is, this um, Steenhucks rezoning and then the subdivision, then we'll talk about the detail.
All right.
So um.
This is the public hearing portion. So this is for the public.
This is zoning map ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three for Ron and Carrie Steenhook. They're requesting a rezoning from A one to Ag Residential of Parcels, one, two, six, seven, two, zero, zero, three, zero, zero, and one, two, six, seven, three, zero, three, five, zero, zero. To allow for further residential, rural residential development in coordinates with fifty-five point two four six. So this is forty-three point seven eight acres. This is in an area that is about a la, thousand feet off of Highway two seventeen. And consistent with the area um, around it where there are, are a lot of rural residential properties. As you can see, the north property line is the one mile border of the city of Pella. So this is one hundred percent in Marion County's jurisdiction. As I did point out and got some feedback during the zoning commission notifications from the city of Pella um, directly to the west of this property is the Pella, is a property owned by the city of Pella. And the west four hundred and twenty-five feet are used by the city of Pella's Police Department approximately five or six times a year as their shooting range. Um, the shooting range elevation sits at about seven thirty and then at the end of that four hundred and twenty-five foot is a thirty-foot berm. The proposed rezoned property is at about eight hundred feet. So I can say that the city of Pella um, does her due diligence when there's going to be um practice or anything going on at the shooting range, they call all neighboring property owners to let them know that there's going to be some activity. In the research I did and talking with Hopkins and Hubner um, six fifty-seven point nine, state of Iowa protects all existing shooting ranges. A person who acquires title to or who owns real estate adversely affected by the use of the property permanently located or improved range shall not maintain a nuisance action against the person who owns the range to restrain, enjoin, or impede the use of the range. There has not been substantial change, if there's not been substantial change to the range. However, that doesn't, if there would be negligence, that doesn't um, obviously that's a different story. Um, immediately when I was contacted by the city of Pella and visited the range with Lieutenant Cox, I did have a conversation with Mr. Steenhook. He's well aware that the range is in existence. Um, the east eight hundred and plus feet is used by the city of Pella for their public works, stockpiles, dirt piles and those types of things. So that is the one unique thing with this. Um, but again, protected by again, when I sent out the notices for this meeting, I was contacted again by this um, Gerald at the city of Pella. I informed him of the the six fifty-seven point nine that does protect the shooting range and its use.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this proposed? Okay, very good. Seeing no, anything online? Emily? Nope. Seeing no additional public comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi. All right, Missy.
So as, as you can see, again, it's forty-three acres. Um, you'll see in the next um, agenda item is the subdivision. They're proposing a three lot subdivision. Two small, one acre, or three acre lots at the front and then the remaining thirty-five acres in the back will be one lot, which does contain some flood plain and very brushy. It, it's a mixture of agricultural uses and brush.
Right. Board, do you have any questions on this for the first reading?
I don't have any questions. I just, you know, comment when, after reviewing this um, this final plat, I was happy to see where the lots one and two were and uh, you know, and making lot three lot larger up next to um, and I don't, I don't know if you're planning to keep that yourself or not, but um, when it comes to, you know, when driving down that road, um, I know, you know, and, and I drive it quite frequently. I know where um, the cities, you know, does, you know, drop off some things there and they, you know, they have their shooting range. So I guess.
You can see from the pictures I included, um, there's quite a, a row of trees between Mr. Steenhucks property and the city of Pella, which row of trees between Mr. Steenhuck's property and the city of Pella's, which would act as a, a buffer, obviously, of the trees, and then it drops down to a lower elevation. So...
Right. But otherwise, no.
Very good. Steve, any questions?
No. I think that, you know, that, that range has been there quite a while.
Forty-plus years.
Yep. Is there a motion on the first reading of this to approve it?
And make motion to approve ordinance 2022-3 first reading.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Item 12 is 2022-3 to waive second and third readings, authorize final approval.
Make the motion to approve ordinance 2022-3, waiving second and third readings.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. And then Resolution 2022-73, next item is approving the final plat.
Correct.
For this.
So, um, with the final plat, again, there's, the first two lots are just over three acres. Um, back lot is 30, actually 37.18. In the review by the county, by the county road department, it was, although lots one and two have direct access to county road, um, the best usable location and, and for safety purposes is that, um, lot three own the access to the back and lot one and two, even with their road access, would share by easement. Um, so they all utilize one driveway because that's, there's really only one, um, safe location in the review by the county road department, uh, to put a driveway in. I have all the, the paperwork
Right.
in hand from the, um, the attorney for Mr. Steenhuck. Um, everything meets the minimum standards of chapter 56 of the Marion County subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Lots are large enough to have, um, serve with, serve with septic.
Okay, good, good. Board, any, uh, no additional questions? Is there a motion on this resolution?
I don't have any, but I'll, I'll make a motion, approve Resolution 2022-73.
Okay.
Approving final plat.
What's that?
You've never done that before.
What's that?
Uh, who, who, who's attesting this? I don't know who that is.
It's be, it's because of who threw up the documents.
Ah.
Mr. Heatbrink. It was Mr. Heatbrink, wasn't it? Yeah. I know Mr. Heatbrink for a long time. All right. So, um, motion by John or second by McCombs, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. John?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Think I'd catch that little detail.
I saw it too.
All right. Uh, we did that. Public hearing is open.
This would be the agenda item and we would ask, do you, so we have several, um, we, I've worked many hours researching other counties and then became working with Des Moines MPO to draft several zoning ordinance changes, um, for added clarification, for added ease of enforcement, to add a few additional, um, uses, which we would use or, um, explain as utility or necessity, um, in different um, areas of the ordinance. And the other thing, um, would be that as of last September 2021, you guys by resolution adopted that we would move forward to include the unincorporated Pershing to come into the zoning as R1.
Right.
That over the, this process, I've had discussion with, I think, seven members of the community out of over a hundred that were notified. Um, some of the major questions were, number one question was, is this going to bring back the sewer projects? My point, my answer was, no, that, that is passed. Um, many of the systems in Pershing have been updated with individual subjects and that's, that's not tied to, although that brought about the issues in Pershing, some of them, that's not going to help that ma, um, issue. The other question was taxation and I assured them that they're already being taxed as what they're using their properties for. Zoning will not affect their taxation. What it will do is help protect some of the issues we currently have as alleys that need to be vacated because there's buildings in the alleys, um, stuff in the right of way, which then makes it difficult for Tyler's people to do their job and maintain good infrastructure. Um, will also help with property line disputes. We have a couple of those going on right now because neighbors have built on or over the property lines.
Right.
So, um, but yeah, overall, um, I, like I said, I did publish these changes, um, four times in the paper. They've been on the website. I did a and a YouTube with Emily. We, we tried our best to get word out there of the changes. So I guess my question to you is, do you want the brief summary or do you want us to go one by one through?
Well, this is the public hearing portion. So are there any comments from the public on these proposed changes? I think the summary that you've got in the description, Missy, when you go down just the list on the description is a very good summary from a public standpoint in terms of the definitional changes. Uh, what you've, what you've done in terms of changing foundation and lot size and R1, all the things that you've said from a public standpoint. So are there any public comments, first of all, before we go to the board section of this? Nothing here. Anything online, Emily? Okay, nothing online. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
All right, very good. Now we have Marion County Ordinance 2022-4. This is the first reading. So, Missy, I like the careful approach.
Correct. Obviously, due to the magnitude and, and the amount of changes, um, it's not one that I would ever have been advised to recommend waiving the second and third reading.
Right. So back when we, as a board, discussed this with you, uh, we wanted to bring some uniformity. Uh, it wasn't just, let's impose, uh, zoning, uh, requirements on this area just for the sake of imposing zoning requirements. It was to bring uniformity in service. Uh, in terms of how buildings are built, the enjoyment of property, the protection of property values. That was the issue that we were facing. Uh, the sewer system, septic system is a totally separate discussion. Doesn't enter into this analysis at all. So Board, do you have any questions? This is for the first reading, so there'll be no final approval today of this.
I guess a few other things. Obviously, we had a lot of definition changes and updates to help, um, with clarification of the ordinance, some things that were missing. Um, we did clarify the non-conforming lots, corner lot language, which was definitely, um, poorly worded in the, in the current ordinance. Um, made some changes to the site or the sign regulation, the advisement of, um, Lucas and his group that were missing. Um, we added a few things to the Ag Zoning District, um, what we call essential services, um, utilities.
What's been the response, Missy?
As far as from...
When you, when you, yeah, when you've talked to the public, what's been their response, as you've explained, for those that you've been able to talk to?
Um, and, and they've all been on board. I mean, all of the people that, I would say, um, we had one gentleman other than, um, people from Pershing at the public hearing for the zoning commission, and he was, uh, felt like we've done a good job adding to, um, the current ordinances. Obviously, we added utility scale solar. The, although A1 and residential lots, it always had a minimum lot size, are commercial and industrial is not. So they now have a one acre minimum. Uh, we updated, worked with Tyler, um, and on some changes to the site plan regulations to make them more understandable, user-friendly, not as, I guess, I would say restrictive. You know, so there's more administrative review and they don't come to you, the zoning commission and the board unless they're substantial. There's some criteria spelled out. Obviously, the one big thing that we've gone back and forth since 19, 2019 was large-scale wind energy. Um, we had many discussions about it, where to allow it. And again, with direction of Lucas and his group, it, we did, um, add utility scale solar in the industrial zoning district. So although it, it is allowed, it is a very, would be very restricted, um, with it and the large-scale solar, we included both, um, documentation, surveys of the roads prior to and after. So, you know, to take, cover any impact that might be done to county roads, we added decommissioning to the ordinances.
Yes. Let me ask a question on large-scale solar and wind. What are we opening ourselves up to if we put that in here? Or let me ask it a different way. What happens if we don't have it? What happens if we specifically say no? Sorry about that. My bad.
It's not clear in your current comprehensive plan, um, and your current zoning ordinance, they're not consistent with each other. So what we're trying to do here is pull things in to be consistent. Um, I believe there's a, there's a text in the current compli, comprehensive plan referring to um, solar and wind energy and being in support of that. So this actually brings that in to concurrence and makes them, um, talk to each other and work together.
We, we have, we have support for that in our comprehensive plan, wind energy?
And yes. So
Really?
In the discussions I had with both, um, Lucas's group and at Des Moines MPO and, um, Hopkins and Hubner, um, you know, we had a couple, and I know Steve was involved in, in the meeting, Keisha was involved in, um, one of the meetings that we were guided, although you can essentially prohibit, that is a bigger risk than adding it and being very restrictive.
And what's the risk? Lawsuit?
Correct.
Someone doesn't like us? Carbon sequestration pipelines, like what they're doing?
When you add the fact that there would be industrial zoning and the setbacks that we specified, which were consistent with the setbacks that were in the previous drafts, 1,500 feet, um, from any rural residential property, two miles from Red Rock. Um, essentially, there, you know, we go back to the original map in 2019, there is not a lot of area, in, in my research of wind energy, they look for areas where they can have multiple powers, multiple large farms, and Marion County is not a county where that is even going to be an option.
With the large body of water we have.
Correct. One mile around every city and it's written in Pella's, um, you know, that they want one mile. We put one mile around every city, two miles around that 55,000 acres in the middle of Marion County and then all the rural residential homes. There's not...
Doesn't leave much at all when we look at it.
But to have it not in our ordinance at all, um, or to not prohibit, then becomes that if you don't cover it in your ordinance at all, then opens you up for the potential to get a request.
Missy, I know you've worked long hard on this. And Lucas, thank you, um, for the MPO to be able to assist us on this. It's, it's...
So my, my concern on this, guys, is that I, I understand that part of it. It's just that I know that all those things can change. We've got a state initiative on wind energy.
Which could potentially change anything we draft.
Absolutely. It could override all that.
Correct.
And so it becomes a different type of issue for us.
That is correct, and that is something that we watched um, before we even started this because it was in, you know, it was discussed at a state level and then was one of those things that just kind of
Yeah.
didn't go anywhere. So, I mean, we always know that anything we drafted, the state comes up, they can certainly, um,
No, I'm, I'm supportive of it, Missy. I'm just highlighting, there's a concern. And it's not just a political concern, it's a societal concern. People are nervous about the advance of this, even though we get all the guarantees from Mid-America and every, we get all the guarantees from the governor, we get all these guarantees. And then you get Texas. Where their whole grid goes down because their windmills freeze. Or where are we going to dispose of all these windmill blades? Because there's no foot...
That's going to be one of my...
Yeah, yeah. And, and we subsidize this. Wind energy is subsidized by the US taxpayer. Carbon sequestration subsidized by the US taxpayer. It's the only reason these companies are in it. So that's as a, as Marion County residents, whether you're for or against green energy, you need to understand what drives it.
And that's why we were very restrictive to only add it in the industrial, uh, because it is in Mahaska County, it is in Powersheet County, it is in Jasper County. So, uh, in one of my commission members, um, Leslie Miller, great resource, she, when she was still in the banking industry, went, attended a seminar on wind energy and Marion County being reviewed, there's only one small location where the elevations and the winds in every directional are correct, and that is, I believe, just south of, just south or just west of Plotonville. So we're not a, a county, especially, again, with the rural residential properties that we have all over.
Yeah.
That's beneficial. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see as it progresses. I have my doubts. That's all right. All right, this is the, uh, for the first reading. Any other questions on it? Missy, thank you. I know it's tough stuff. Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Steve, for working on this too.
Very much. Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
I make motion to approve, um, the first reading of ordinance 2022-4.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Thank you, Missy.
Raimi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Combs?
Aye.
Then, Missy, you'll bring this back when? All right. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 16, uh, this is from me. And I want to have a discussion on the laundry building on a VA property, and do we need to start thinking about getting some kind of appraisal for that building? Given the progress we're making, Knoxville started the development on its first phase. Uh, we know we have some desire to, um, dispose of that laundry facility at some point. We're working on grants. We don't know the disposition of those grants. But I think, uh, we need to at least have a discussion on whether we want to, uh, start going down that road. The city of Knoxville has done a, a high-level appraisal on those first lots, as you see by the green park, coming up with about $33,000 to $35,000 per lot. That's the ground itself, doesn't really apply to the buildings. So that's the discussion item, uh, for the board.
I don't necessarily have a problem, um, in regarding, uh, Chris and I talked about some appraisers, um, and who was out there seeing, you know, what opportunities there are, because I do know that kind of need to get it scheduled if we're going to do it because it's, it, they're backed up generally. So, yeah, I don't have a problem.
They should be able to appraise it both with the structure, the, you know, the equipment in it and out of it.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that was my, that was my only question also, was what are we appraising that?
Yeah.
Cleaned out value or?
I think you do both.
Yeah.
What if we don't get the grants?
Right.
So, um, but at least we'll know what the value is, and if we want us to then do what we did with the, uh, county home, we would set a floor for the price that we're willing to accept, uh, on something of that magnitude, but...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the appraisal.
Okay. Good. Well, let's do this. Um, let's, I assume we probably should put Chris in charge... Good. Well, let's do this. Let's, I assume we probably should put Chris in charge of seeking out a, a price for that and who's going to do it and bring that to the board. So let's, if you make a motion to authorize Chris to do that, seek out of, an appraiser and a price and then bring that before the board for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi. Very good, thank you. Updates. Steve.
I don't really have any at this time, other than I'm trying to get back to a hundred percent.
Keisha.
I know we've been receiving the meetings and regarding, it's the COOP, the, what's that, what's that stand for, Emily, the C O O P? And so there's three that are coming up that we need to, you know, you know what I'm talking about with Jeff, yeah. There's three meetings and so there's a health and response and, and, sorry, I should speak into the mic. There's health and response, internal resources and infrastructure and land use. When we were here at this meeting, kind of it was spoke about that we would each take one. So I thought maybe we should maybe talk about which one we wanted to do.
So the continuation of government plan?
Yeah, 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 but I.
Yeah.
She calls it this.
Yeah, COGS. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, what, what do we have with our options?
Health and response, which is on January ninth from ten AM to twelve. And then there's internal resources, which is on twelve, twelve, from one PM to three PM. And then infrastructure and land use on twelve, five, from one PM to three PM.
Okay. All right, which, what, do you have a desire?
I really don't care. Yeah, I just figured we'd each take one.
Steve, anything you, anything interesting to you?
I think the infrastructure and land use would interest me.
I think it would, that, that sounds like a good fit. Okay, Steve, you're on that one.
What date that, what time is it?
I have it down as twelve, five, from one PM to three PM. So we'll just have to.
One to three.
Yep.
Okay, so Steve's on, Steve's on infrastructure, Keisha?
Yep.
Which one do you want?
I, I really don't care. Do you want to do the health and response since you're on the health board?
I don't care, pick one.
Yep, I'll do internal resources.
Okay. All right. And then, yeah, there's no real act. We'll just divvy it up like that. Do that. Perfect, thank you.
And then the other quick thing I wanted to say, thank you to Jake and his staff and all the poll workers. Appreciate that. Appreciate all their, you know, dedication. It was a smooth election.
All right. Well, I want to, I want to call you a different name, Jake. Now that I saw it. All right, very good. Next, just put on the agenda, Jake, I want to have a follow-up on our public health discussion. Our potential public health discussion move. Next meeting. I think that's it for me. With that, a motion to adjourn.
Make motion adjourn.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
Hi.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.